Really?
You never got back to me.
I did.
I don't, I didn't email back.
You said the eleventh would work.
I said the eleventh would work.
That's definitely spot on, couldn't do either of them.
Well, either that or it's gonna be like, it's too hard to try to get five people to say the same gesture.
Did I, didn't I?
Yeah, you said the eleventh would work.
So what, what day do we want to do it? I will email them back. What's, why don't we?
Maybe we all have to be here.
First thing they said, they, well, no, but it'd be nice if everybody was here.
I think it would be good.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we're struggling.
I'm busy first. But, again, so.
I gotta, I gotta.
Let's pick, why don't we pick, well, we can do it after the meeting here. Why don't we pick like two or three different days?
Well, I, I think you just will, uh, basically scratch the rest of this month off unless you do it the thirty first. Rest of my month.
It's ISAC.
I'm not next week, next week.
But what about Monday after our meeting? Next Monday, on the sixteenth?
Yeah.
I can make that, uh, right now.
I need square bill. I'm supposed to be leaving, but that's fine.
Well, I don't know if that'll work for them either because the day I gave them last time, that worked for us, didn't work for them, so.
Oh, the eleventh.
I don't remember. I'm getting confused.
It's too much.
It's too much. I think they should just pick three days and give them three days.
Jake, are you gone all next weekend that we get to that?
Well, yeah, next weekend.
I don't, try the thirtieth. After our meeting.
Would work too, probably. Thirtieth and thirty first, I'm open, but, yeah.
Well, let's try that, I guess.
Give them those two days?
Yeah.
Okay. I will email them.
And the first. Can we give them the first of September as well? Three days? We were talking three days.
Yeah, yep.
I'm open with the day.
Yep. Okay, then we'll scratch that off next.
All right.
My whole schedule, next two steps, two steps.
I got jury duty tomorrow.
How lucky you.
Man, they won't pick anybody.
You won't get mileage then, ladies, don't take care.
True story, yeah. No, I won't because I got supposed to report till the thirtieth and I'll already be here.
Least paid jurors ever.
I would, I would request mileage from one floor to the next.
How many days? See how many steps?
Sets, sets per step.
One mile.
Oh, it's horrible, we least trash.
Okay, let's, uh.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Okay, first thing we have is approve the agendas, any additional corrections to the agenda?
Right now, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh, there was one addition, Zach had.
Yeah, I guess I have, I'll leave it on the list. I have, if I do that with a second one and add in.
Oh, okay, yeah, or if all of them got you killed, it's all that stuff. That's fine. Okay, uh, so we'll leave it as it's been a motion to approve, so second, then move to second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say a five and six.
Aye.
Great. That's the approval of the minutes from last week.
The minutes appear to be very well done.
If they move the second to approve the minutes of last week, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say a five and say an aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, the first thing we have is an update from Karash on the HIPAA project. Are you expecting someone?
Uh, Stephanie, it looks like she, um, should be able to.
Chudal?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So Dalton, can I, uh, share my screen or?
Yeah, my bad.
Turn the light down.
I'll be right back, I forgot my phone.
Take the bugs with you. Throw it out.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, looks like you're coming through.
Okay, everybody back or wait a minute?
Wait just one second, wait, yeah.
Order them.
Um, if you want to take a chance, a second here, Roger, and explain to them kind of what this is, but, uh, Courtney is the one that is running up to get stuff. She, she knows what we're doing today, so.
Okay, sure. So, uh, on July twenty seven, we came in and we did the, uh, risk assessment on the security side of the regulations. Uh, within the regulations, there's a hundred and three different vulnerabilities. And what we needed to do was assess the probability or likelihood that one of those vulnerabilities come to pass. And what the impact on the county and the individuals' information was inappropriately shared. Uh, if the vulnerability came to pass, that created a risk score. And that percolated up, as you can see over here on the left-hand side, you know, a risk score of high, medium, or low. Uh, it also, so, so that's the first step. Uh, regulations require that once we, we do the risk assessment, we come up with a remediation plan, which is exactly what it says. And that is, um, how are we going to remediate these risks? And we look at them, uh, in chunks of high, medium, and low risks. And so this is a copy of the remediation plan that lays out how the timeline for remediating these risks. You can see that, um, we have a risk score over here on the left, which is what came out of the risk assessment we did. Then we have a definition of what the threat is, which comes out of the regulations. And also the action plan item also comes out of the regulations. Then we list the policy number, uh, which addresses the specific, uh, threat. The status of where we are in terms of remediating this threat. And who's assigned to make sure this threat is remediated and then who is ultimately going to approve remediation that we did. And then, of course, we have a target date as to when this needs to be done. Uh, target date isn't a, a, uh, drop dead date in the sense that we have to hit it exactly. Regulatory agencies want to see, be able to have us demonstrate that we're making meaningful progress through the remediation. So if we're hitting these dates plus or minus, uh, that's what we're looking for. Today, what we can need, we need to do, and you can see up here it says waiting, uh, for approval. We need to approve the remediation plan, uh, that'll freeze it in stone. And then we'll begin working on other remediation on a new, uh, copy of the plan. And as we work through that, uh, we'll be coming back and asking for approval on certain parts of, of what we're doing, so. Does that make sense to everybody before I move into takeaway for today?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so typically what we do, and, and the team has had the opportunity to look through the plan. The areas where we typically make changes is who's assigned, who's the assignee. Uh, you can see that Dalton, uh, handles many of these with, uh, Ben. Taking on some of them, they're based upon the roles, whether it's a chief security officer, chief privacy officer. Uh, someone involved in, in, um, maintenance, uh, these kinds of things. So want to make sure that we agree with who's responsible. And then we basically assign target dates. We give ninety days for the, uh, to remediate the high items. Another thirty days to remediate the medium items, another sixty days to remediate the low and, and wrap everything up. So we want the remediation done, uh, by the end of Ju- uh, January of twenty twenty-two. Uh, given that you have many policies in place and what we need to do is review those policies. I think we'll be able to, uh, not only hit this timeline, but, but, um, get through it much quicker than we've laid out, which is not a problem. Uh, you know, these, as I say, are, are expectational, they're not, they're not, uh, required. So what we're looking for today, way down here at the bottom, is basically to, uh, approve, uh, the remediation plan so we can move on to the next step. So, uh, the approval needs to come from the board of supervisors. And so that's what we're asking for today, is that we can approve remediation plans so we can move on to the next step.
How many, how many items are listed in this plan? Can you kind of roll through it? Is there a count on that?
You know what? I have never actually counted them up. Uh, they handle all hundred and three different items. Uh, there should be about seventy of them on the security side and the rest are on the, on the privacy side.
So these are the only ones that need, um, action?
Well, yes, the, the way we do it, because security tends to be more onerous to get in place and do the security side. We get much of the security remediation done, then we'll come back and do the privacy side. But because of the overlap, the privacy goes much quicker, so. So I don't want to say these aren't the only things we need, these are the things we need on the security side.
Do any of these, um, recommendations to get us in compliance require the board to, um, make a first step towards software or any other type of program that's going to cost county any dollars?
Well, I.
I don't, I don't, I think, and then when I'm approving it, I'm approving us spending twenty thousand dollars.
From what we're doing, uh, this is not approving any additional funds. Uh, having worked with Dalton a bit, my expectation is Dalton will be able to address any of the technical items. Uh, so you're not going to be needing outside, you know, third-party vendor. There may be some recommendations in terms of, you know, updating software, updating hardware. But those are recommendations, they're not a requirement for, for compliance.
I answer that question some too. Uh, from what I recall, everything we went through, um, most of the softwares, um, they would generally require we've already paid for. So, uh, the, the software is, they asked about, um, like the backup, uh, for identifying HIPAA information on the network. Those are some of the counties that have been paying for it. So, um, just what he scanned through, that's just all stuff we have, just for remediations and changes. We have to make in our network to make the network more secure. Not them in Chicago, it's an answer, I mean, so.
Any other questions?
Are we required to have a third-party review?
A third-party review of?
Anywhere one of these items?
Uh, well, part of what you engaged us for is to do an audit. So we actually will be the third-party doing the review. You, you do have a requirement to be able to document that you are operating the way you say you're operating within all the policies and procedures that are adopted. Uh, that's something that you engaged us to do for you as part of our, uh, engagement.
For the most part, most of this is just updated policies that, so we make sure policies are followed.
Correct. We want to make, the next step will be to review the policies that you have, uh, to make sure that they actually reconcile with how you're operating.
Any other questions?
How were you able to do a risk assessment without knowing our policies?
Well, we did an interview of the team that's putting this together and actually, we do have a sense of your policies. Policies that you are currently using, I believe, came from ISAC, which are policies that we wrote in conjunction with them. So we have a good handle on the policies, but this really came through a, um, a, an interview with the team. We build up a risk score based upon, uh, different questions that we ask and knowing what the probability is for each of the vulnerabilities to occur, you know, in general, so.
All right, thank you.
Has anyone else seen these? I don't. I did, well, before we approve something, I'd like to be able to reveal them. Or at least have an email sent to us, so. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, you can't read it up there. Dalton, you gotta sign everyone up and you're sitting there quiet, so you must be.
Well, we, when we have a meeting with them, those are the things that they want to do more.
Yeah, this is just.
On because we are in compliance. Those are all the items we are in compliance with. You look at that list and unless you're an IT person, you might not.
Yeah, it's just a bunch. That, that was the thing, like, a lot of it's just like making active directory changes for security. Who, yeah, exactly. Or, or it's gonna say that in the interview, what's that mean? But I, I'm happy if you guys wanted to sit down and, and go through if you have questions about it.
Well, if you're okay with it.
Uh, honestly, from what I see on it, it's all stuff that needs to be done and we should have been doing before. So I'm okay with it personally, um, but do you guys still more comfortable reading it?
I'm okay with it if you are, if it's gonna be over our head.
Well, I, it was over mine. Not everything, but a lot of it, a lot of it was.
How does it change the end user? What is their, is their, things are gonna be affected by that end?
Um, the only thing I think about for end users might, um, would be like maybe training possibly, so, um.
Yeah, they'll definitely be trained.
Yeah, i- if, if they have any risk of, of touching HIPAA information or something like that. They want to do training just to cover our bases, but it's all covered under what we paid with Karash. It's not like it costs us any extra, it's just covering our bases, so.
Any other questions?
So it actually is not going to affect any department through, just, uh.
Me?
Just make, yeah, you're, well, I want to, yeah, other than your department. I mean, most of it is to make sure that we're just doing things correctly and so we have a secure system.
Well, like he said, this is a security portion of it.
Yeah, it, it's accountability for me, it's big, hey, Dalton has to do this by these days. And it, it's you guys planning off and saying, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put our IT guy towards making these changes, um, to make deposit changes, to make us more compliant.
And you can see a few of them, it's like, our software procedures, mechanisms to record it. I mean, of course, I can see it was all IT stuff. I don't know that I had to do anything, I don't know that Megan needs to do anything to pay for security.
A big chunk of us, too.
What access, did they change that at all?
No. We, uh, the way promote access now is secure and HIPAA compliant, so. We, we've recently moved towards the, we set up a, that, that, that's the way we should do it, we set her up, so.
Okay, now, my next question to you is, you've seen this and it seems like between you and Ben are both start here to make the corrections, is this doable?
Yes, I am for it. Yes, it is. It's just a matter of making those. Um, another thing I can think of is Zach asked about affecting the end users. Um, the only thing I could think of is maybe password policies. Uh, we might be a little more secure in the password policies where there are fire, the end users to maybe changing passwords and moving off of. Now, in, in a lot of the securities in ours, I said, and, uh, they're pushing people towards having longer passwords, they're more complex. But you're able to change it often, so. We'll kind of see how that all pans out, but before I make any password policy changes or anything like that, I'll make sure to send you an email, so you know. Yeah, I'm looking to me to think about changing my password to something I don't, or something I can remember, so.
Any other questions?
So this is a cyber portion of this?
Big chunk of it, yeah. Um, you know, some of it's like physical stuff too, but, uh.
So, so what is, what is to follow with Karosh? What's cyber, then what? Then procedural, so.
Well, so, if I can jump in, this is Roger, so the, the security side. Regulations broke up into security and privacy because of the legacy of how the acts were implemented. So this, the security side goes beyond cyber, there's a lot of people and processes in here. Um, let me see, I can pull one up quickly just to show you an example. Um, yeah, user identification. Uh, so the regulation requires that everybody have a unique username, ID number, so we can track usage. So that wouldn't really fall under cyber, it falls under people and processes. So I just don't want to, you know, have you think that this is just all cybersecurity. It's not, it's all the part of the regulation that deals with the use of computers and electronic devices. Uh, when addressing both protected health information and personal private information. Again, a legacy, uh, issue because the, the first HIPAA regulations, you know, date back to nineteen ninety-six. Long before the kind of computer usage we have is in place, so the security side is aged back to two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve. When the regulations were updated. So, uh, there is a lot of cyber in this, but only about a third of it is really cyber or technical. The rest of it are people and processes, which is why a lot of it is, is writing, uh, policies and procedures and reviewing those.
Any other questions?
Is there a motion then to approve, uh, moving forward on this project?
That's what you want, right?
Yeah.
Proving that we need remediation.
And honestly, I, I, it's outside my budget, if I did have to buy an extra software or something like that, I'll, you guys will be the first one to tell us something like that happens, so. But, um, from what I've seen through all these changes and the questionnaires that they've asked us, there's nothing that. Cool your concerns there.
Make the motion then approve. Uh, Karash to move forward with this HIPAA project.
I'll second.
And to approve the remediation?
Yeah, that's a horrible.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify with a say an aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, I'm gonna sign off for you guys, so you don't have to log in. And I will, uh, get Dalton a, a copy of this for distribution to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if you guys have questions about any items.
Okay, next we have, uh, Zach. Anderson, secondary rules.
We have two permits to say, um, first one is White USA to the communications, um, this is it's under Windstream's umbrella at this point, uh, but, uh, what they're looking to do on this project is relashing some overhead, uh, line that they have. About three locations, they're gonna bore underneath. Underneath the party, some crossings and in some, the back of right away to, uh, get away from some conflicts that they have, but, uh, most of this project of the twenty-three K using plans that they have is relashing our cable.
Said on that, uh, sixty-nine thousand volt line that, uh.
It's, it's on Hawthorne.
They're a big power line there.
I believe that, yeah.
It's, it's.
It starts up at two-twentieth, um, heads west to Hawthorne, then it drops down all the way to three-hundredth. And come across, um, two thousand and four, so, but really not doing much right away, but, but letting us know what, that they're gonna be out there. I think the biggest thing is the power line is sagging some, and they need to have enough clearance away from their, their power line. And in some areas where they're getting too low, that's where they're gonna actually bore and put some of it underground, so.
So this does go into, into Templeton then, and, uh?
There.
And there's the town, right?
He, uh, looks like the areas where they're, where they're actually showing or relashing, they're actually showing in Templeton. Right in, I mean, three-hundredth, I think, or section there, but they're, I guess they're not showing it right in Templeton, none of the stations I have, so.
That's what I meant, that, I mean, there's, there and then deep in the valley.
Correct.
So relashing that needs tightening up.
Tightening up or, or to some extent maybe even loosening to have the right clearance above, above or, or below the, the power lines. So I need to try and accomplish, so. I think the, and I'm, I'm not an expert in this, but the strand or whatever they're using to hold that wire up, they're maybe replacing that part of that some places. The fibers all kind of need to stay in place, but what's actually holding that, stretching that cable, that cable across there, there have been need to replace that in places as well as tightening up like this.
You want to do these individually or?
Yeah, maybe, since they're a little bit different types of things.
Is there a motion then to approve the utility permit?
I'll make a much different review, we feel it's correct from the cloud.
I will start from that one. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, certainly five, say an aye.
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 Mr. Gary, can you have another one?
I do have one other one, this is for, uh, Raccoon Valley Electric Coa. Um, this is just for a, uh, bore underground for a service, uh, under Quail Avenue. On this, be just south of Liverdale. This is, uh, Grant Township, section ten, the, the pavement there. Just for the, for that acreage, I believe, so. I don't see the issues with this one, pretty standard issue what they're trying to do, they'll be more than four foot underground, bored in.
I'll make a motion to approve the Raccoon Valley. During the next.
I'll second.
Move to second to approve the Raccoon Valley utility permit. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say the five, say an aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Give you a little update, kind of where we're set with construction items. Payment markings are complete, they got those done. Not last week, week four, I believe, um, they're done everywhere, right, early last week, actually. Patching old seventy-three down to Rapids, I can last my talk to two weeks, so that was just near completion, that is done and they're all, that road has been open, um. I think I relatively sufficiently improved it in the, in the right amount, so. Want to go down there, been for a while. Um, also got some HMA patching done, uh, in Howard, Acadia, and then one patch in Templeton, that's all been completed. The, uh, N thirty-three project, the Devon Old Road, that's going well, we got finished with the immediate lift on Friday. Started on surface, so. Open by the end of this week, there's not a lot left, it might roll into Saturday, beginning of next week, if things go well, they should. Things go well, they should be moving right along and be close to being done with the paving part. This will have to. Paving markings and marble straps and that kind of thing, but. Looks like that's going pretty well, so. And then the last thing, the HMA research thing on G forty-six from Howver, the O C O. That is tentatively planned to start August twenty-third, in that time, at that time, two weeks from today. We'll see what happens over the course of the next two weeks with weather and what the contractors availability is. That's kind of the. Guess on that. And again, that'll be open, it won't be closed. It will be that, how it garden fighting, so there'll be delays possibly, but in the world will not be closed.
I see that it states there, I wrote that this week, and then there's some spots in there that, those are some bad, real bad spots that you cut up?
No, that's, uh, they, they mill up some of the milling to, and they, they sample those and test them to find out the oil content. They put that rat back in the mix to even know the oil content of that, of that, of what they're milling off. That way they can make their mix design based on that, so. They have to do three, three spots, three samples to get uniform, have uniform tests, what, what that is. That's, that's what those are.
And that's your micro.
They missed some spots, didn't they?
Well, I just thought there must have been a soft spot or something to do.
They, they did that in the Devon River as well. It's funny, people were swerving around in, down there, they, they grabbed confidence, they were swerving around those spots. That's what I have for construction going on.
My brother lost public.
Uh, haven't heard from the contractors yet. My guess is that will still be coming September, Octoberish. We'll see what their schedules are. I would assume that for the most part, they've been doing pretty well. I know that some places they've had some rain, here's heavy rain, depending on contract to check out. Overall, should be in shape for the new construction season, so. I haven't heard anything else.
The other question for Zach? Anything else? Okay, next we have approval flats. Maybe we just got one, right? And it's setting up a separate acreage on that.
It needs a minimum five eighty requirement. It's pretty straightforward. I'll make a motion to approve that flat.
It's been moved in second to approve the flat. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favorites signify by saying aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is the approval of the treasurer's six thirty twenty-one semi annual report. Any questions on this? It's pretty straightforward, I think. There is no question.
Is Lisa gonna show up to present this?
No, I usually just present it on behalf of the treasurer, because they sent it to me and I just verified with my numbers. And if it looks good, then I have the board approve it and send it to the paper, so.
You can see any issue?
No, it, her numbers match mine, which is what we want.
Any other questions, Stephanie?
No, I just think going forward, since every other department head presents their quarterly reports, it'd be kind of nice to hear from her too and see how the department's going as well, just kind of an update.
This is a semi annual report, it's not a quarterly report. Because I think she comes in for quarterly reports.
Okay.
Oh, maybe she don't.
And I mean, she was more than willing to come.
Okay.
But we've just, the treasurer's never presented it. It's always been on her, so. But if you want to change it, I'm sure she'd be more than happy to.
We can just look at it going forward. No big deal.
I'll make a motion to approve the semi annual treasurer's report. Okay, is your second?
I'll second that.
Then move the second to approve the treasurer's semi annual report. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay. Uh, next we have is the tax assignment. Or certificate. This is in regard to a piece of property that we have, that's a child there that. It's just a real small piece that the neighboring parties willing to take over that tax certificate and also pay the assignment fees. That is for tax sale certificate nineteen dash oh one zero zero zero. Is there any questions on this tax? This is what we're doing about here. Well, multiple may.
It's been a while, yeah.
It's a year rate mover piece. That's a regular service.
Oh, that's.
So five shifts, yeah.
I remember, right, the board just said they were okay, you guys were okay with it, but we just needed him to submit his request. So that's what this is. The treasurer will collect the piece from Mr. Flucky and then.
So you just need a motion for it? I'll make so.
Then move in second. All of the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, next we have is the approval of CDVG DPA draw number five.
See, the total was eight thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars. A little bit of the information from that as well, so.
Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve that draw number five for eight thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars?
I'll make that motion for the draw number five.
I'll second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This is in regard to our holiday program.
I need to signature to it with a claimant certification.
Yeah, I got one. Okay. Next we have is approval of ABCD LLC lease for a fricky parking lot. This is lease that we have for the parking lot, or, and there's been no cheese on this.
We made no changes. I'm gonna present this to them. Same dollars. They, they have an issue with it. They would need to get back to us requesting an increase or something that we answered before, but county attorney prepared this.
So was your lease back before this?
It's, it's a three-year lease.
So it has expired?
It will expire September first.
Okay. That's been three years since we signed that.
Well, yeah, this was previously owned by Pat Reese.
Yeah.
And then this ABCD LLC took over the lease. And so this will be, this is actually the first three-year lease we have with them.
With it, yeah. Is there a motion to approve that lease? I'll make a motion to approve that lease. I'll say. Then move in second. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favorites signify by saying aye.
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 Motion.
I believe this. It's gotta be otherwise, so if we want to come up and we'll sign it up.
Okay, uh, next we have is approval of contractor deal with National Elevator Inspection Services. You want to.
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of background on this. So this company, National Elevator Inspection Services. We already use them to inspect our elevator here in the courthouse. Their fees are less than state, so we just used this company. They would like to bring, or would like to do the new elevators as well, so they'd be doing one here and the ones in the trail, and that's the business. From what we past experience, they're a better deal and the better financial. Cheaper, I don't want to say cheaper, but they are less expensive than the other option that we have, so that's why we used them in the past. So just making this to Zach and I, especially to the board to decide.
So that's for eighty dollars per year?
Yeah, it looks like that'll be two hundred and forty dollars. I believe they do this at three a year.
Three-year contract.
So we've already had one with them for our elevator, so just have the two.
Sitting in this chair a little bit, looks good, but when you get on the elevator, you always question yourself a little bit, and I'm hearing on this elevator, so. Questions your, your, your thoughts.
They were at least expensive, not.
I didn't want to say.
I'll make a motion to agree with you guys, and I go up to something, a little bit, did get this, you know.
The move deserves like a thirty bucks to keep. I'll second it. Any further discussion? If not, all of the favorites signify.
Aye.
Aye.
So I need a signature. It's just the name. You want to sign both of them before I make a. It's not very clear. I just signed a call. Yeah. Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't even see it.
Okay, next we have is the appointment of. Region twelve housing authority board member. And again, this is, uh, Jim Nod is accepting to be nominated for that position. He's had this for many years. Is there a motion to appoint Jim Nod to the housing authority board?
Some of.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Okay, next we have, um, some public hearings for fiscal year twenty-two budget amendment. Speak for me.
I'm gonna be looking at the sheet, because I like this one the best. So it'll be one that shows each account number, et cetera. Does everybody have that one? So I'll start up at the top. I'm just gonna go through this and kind of give you a little bit of background on each of them. Stop me if you have a problem with one of them. Well, stop me if you have a question on it. Obviously, we're not, we're being used today, but we're gonna set it here to do that, so. Have to clean up anything that you have an issue with, so. First thing I have on here is the HIPAA program. I'll just talk about that a little bit ago. That is the price that they're charging us to do our plan. That was approved, that budget, that one. It's approved, it'll lock them, is what I should say. That cost is fourteen thousand six fifty. Um, I made a mistake when I did the budget. I transposed a number of the attorney's salaries when I put them in the system versus on the actual budget. So I need to adjust that because of my error. So we have one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. We need to add that there. So just to point out that that was not John's error, that was mine. Uh, the next few items are the VA. That was recently just approved to make our VA director full-time position. So we have to make some adjustments there. First one you see, which is a negative, is actually adjusting the part-time salary line. To get her salary out of there, and then we've got an adjustment on the full-time line. To basically add her salary in there. You can see those last six numbers, or I'm sorry, five numbers on the expense line are different. We have different numbers for part-time people versus full-time people. So that's another reason I just didn't put it in the line that we already had set up. I created an equal timeline. So that's the adjustment. Um, her salary is not, didn't go up thirty-six thousand dollars, I want to clarify that. But I do have to put that money in that line in order to pay her, and that's why there's an adjustment on the part-time line. So, and then the items below that.
So the director's been figured as a part-time position?
Before she was paid out of a part-time salary line, yes, with, with the secretary. So now we're just splitting that out. And we need to do that because when we do employment reports and stuff, we need to know who's full-time and who's part-time. And that's what that last five digits differentiates those, so. Um, and then the item, a few items below that, FICA and IFRS are adjusting that as well. Um, I'm also adjusting their health insurance because she is now eligible for more than just a single. And it's my understanding there'll be a different policy, there'll be a policy change at some point this year. So I put some money in there, so when that does happen, we have money in there to pay for it. Um, the next item is the VA grave markers. In fiscal twenty-one, there was. Forty-six hundred dollars left over in that budget that didn't get spent. What she'd like to do in fiscal twenty-two is buy some new markers for some of the graves. So she'd like to move her, I'm gonna say, reserves that she had held out from last year that didn't get spent and move them into twenty-two. So that's what that is. The next item is the courthouse. It's not the courthouse, but that's the line, that's the name of the expense line. It's for the repairs of the, the repair, the replacement at the fricky building. That item was previously budgeted for twenty-one, and they didn't get done until twenty-two, so we need to pay for that in twenty-two instead of twenty-one. So that's why that's in here. Of course, we didn't spend it, so it went back into the reserves, but we'll have to pull that back out to go. And then the next item is the hazard mitigation plan. That's the one that we're doing with region twelve. That was not budgeted for within our budget, so we have to budget five thousand dollars a year for the next five years to create that. That's what that's for. All right, so moving down to general supplemental, the first two items is the attorney's adjustment. Due to my error, I had to also adjust the FICA and IFRS total is two hundred and seven dollars there, so we'll get that adjusted, so his line items are in good shape. Um, next item is recovery fund. I created, well, I can create a new fund. This fund used to be called case management way back in the day. I renamed the fund and we're gonna now call it the recovery fund. So if we hopefully receive our funds, I did call, we are in process that payment was released for, to be issued to us July twenty-sixth. It said normally it takes a couple of weeks, so hopefully it's on its way. Um, after talking to Gene, I put the amount we should be getting here in fiscal twenty-two in here. I also put it on the expense side. I know we'll probably won't spend all of that this year, but I know we will spend some money with S E H. Since they're doing our spatial needs and things like that, so I just did it as an in and out. Obviously, the money will for sure be coming in. How much money will be going out in twenty-two, I don't know. See how everything goes. Um, rule, um, the sheriff touched upon this a little bit when he was in and said his Tahoe was finally in. He ordered the Tahoe back in fiscal year twenty-one, it never got delivered, they didn't get it, couldn't pay for it. So he actually turned back over the fifty thousand that was going to spend on the Tahoe. So what I'm doing is pulling that from the World Services reserves that were left over from twenty-one to pay for the purchase because this, for his sake, the vehicle's in. So. Moving down, we've got the parking lot here at the courthouse repairs. I might put the amount that was not supposed to exceed in there. So it's got forty thousand dollars there. The next item is, I did some figuring. I looked at the mating bill. I looked at the shy hattery bill on the numbers that we still have to spend with them. Of course, that's official changes, but looked at that. There's like a few bills that come through for like concrete testing and things like that that we've been paying to see, make sure we had enough money to get that project paid for. And what I found out is I think we're going to be about four hundred thousand dollars short in what was in the capital fund versus what we need to spend. So according to my calculations, that's what we need. I'm taking it out of local action and putting it into the capital fund for the jail. You could see in the next line down, I have a jail project of one point one million, one, one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six fifteen. Now, that's not us pulling that additional money. That money, well, seven hundred and some thousand of it's already sitting in there to be spent. But it's not budgeted to be spent. So I needed to make that expense line. So we're able to write checks out of there. The shortfall I'm coming up with is about four hundred thousand dollars.
So do we have all the farm proceeds?
No, that, those farm proceeds are sitting in the general fund. And we talked a little bit about how that would kind of offset, you know, we got low, low in there before we collect taxes and we had that pushing in there. So that's, didn't really know where to take it from, but knew there was money in the collection.
Because that was part of what we've been using for that one.
We certainly can't, yeah. Obviously, it doesn't matter to me where you decide to take the money. I just didn't want to get into the end of the project and we were short. Because technically, we have funds available to pay those bills, but it's not in the right place. I did run a, and I can certainly send this to all of you. I was kind of interested to see how much we've actually spent on that project because obviously they've both been done for whole time. And I'm just looking here to see if I printed it out.
This would eat all the bond stuff.
So. But I'd be happy to send that to you. It's just an Excel document that shows all the expenses. I think it's over the last three years. Remember, we started paying those out of local action at the very beginning. Started paying them out of the jail fund after we got home money. So I thought it was interesting because there's a lot of stuff that's not paying. You know, and all that stuff, that's, you know, the concrete testing and all these other things. So, I mean, I found it interesting. So I'll send me that as well, too. So I can help here to send that to you. That way you can kind of see why or how. Because we only got ten point, some odd million in farm proceeds, so.
So then you are anticipating, anticipating the jail project running over.
I don't want to say run over. I just, I don't think the bond proceeds that we received are enough to pay for the total cost of the project. So over, over maybe what the bond money was, yes. But is that over the, is that over budgeted, what you guys thought? Because I think the bond proceeds weren't going to be quite what was needed, but.
Okay, that's why we were talking about using that farm.
Well, we, the, the engineer, I guess, I don't know if she's used that word. Cut some things out, but then we also put the elevator back in, which that was a hundred bucks, so. You know, it is a big thing to add it back after we took off, then we add it back as we went a little bit further. But not a lot. Well, yeah, some of that's, okay, some of that's come out of his budget, too. And not yet, and not yet those proceeds, but yes.
So.
Like I said, I think we were planning on using some of that farm proceeds. But you're just saying that the money's not in the right category.
Well, yes and no. So the debt proceeds went into the capital fund. Ten million, nine hundred, whatever it was. Exactly, but right around there. I'm saying that the project, the total project is going to cost more than that. And in order to be able to pay the remaining bills, I estimate a few grits, meaning a thousand dollars. When I look at the dating bill, I can see that they deducted almost six hundred thousand dollars off of their original bid. But we've added back four hundred fifty-one thousand. So, I mean. So, like I said, I found that spreadsheet to be kind of interesting to see where the money's going. You know, a lot of it went to shy hattery. Was shy hattery's expenses part of the bond? Or was the bond totally the jail?
Just for the contract.
I wa, I wasn't sure on that. Plus all the other little things.
Well, like all the testing and stuff like that and the stuff you don't think.
But I will send that to you as well, so you can see exactly where the money went. So, I mean, if you want that four hundred thousand dollars to come from somewhere else, certainly do that. I just did that because we have, we still haven't started collecting taxes yet.
Correct. Until we get past, until we get past that point, I think for your comfort zone, that would be quite better off than leaving the farm proceeds right where it's at.
You know, and I, you know, the, the sheriff's talked about some excess revenues that the jail's going to be getting for housing prisoners. So it wouldn't be totally out of line to possibly pay back the local action fund with some of those revenues that we want to. You know, the jail comes out of the general fund. We, you could look at doing that, maybe pay the fund back. But then you're shorting the general fund for his extra revenue. So, I mean.
And I can agree with you. I think the local options up here, I have now, I think. We keep our account level on the other front. Let's just leave that to the farm proceeds there. We all know what the intent was. It's more easier what's going through.
So, um, the other thing was probably the most. I mean, I did have to do quite a bit of checking because I, I didn't want to put more in there than I thought we need, but I didn't push for ourselves either. You don't want to get to the end of the project and share as much of it, at least five hundred thousand dollars. You know, we don't have to be willing to take it out of it. Pretty confident unless there's some major changes that this should make, should be the rules.
But then you should probably. Farm proceeds were, I thought, were going to go towards the ISICS program. On the ISICS project.
And the ISICS project was funded, obviously paying for the actual payments and studying the debt service. But the project, like all every month and stuff, that was all made out of local action. So that's where that money came from.
Actually, I think Dean was right. It was, it was for both projects, the business and the jail.
So, um, the ISICS, the actual loan or whatever you want to call it, the cap is getting back for the debt. But the, all the remodeling, the fencing and the batteries and the generators and all that stuff that we have. And it's all been tracked separately. So there again, if you want to take those farm proceeds out of the general fund or a portion of that, you can certainly move it back to the collection and maybe have one back. There again, it's a it's very flexible in the general fund for sure. It's also very flexible.
Oh, and more, more flexible than local action.
It is, it is, but either way. Either way. And I'm going to be working on the cash report that will be effective at June. And that shows us how much money we had in our funds at the end, actually. So. And you guys got the report I sent from the department. So I want to take that. I thought we had quite a bit of money that was not spent, which should make our research better. Because I asked, when I do our estimating to do the budget, I say, okay, we're going to spend every penny and we're going to collect everything. So kind of a best guess. Yeah. Usually it turns out better. That's all I have for the amendment. It covered everything, all the changes that we've made since we did our budget back in March. The overall cost is one million, three eighteen, three fifteen, so. Posting that we set the date for August twenty-third at nine thirty.
Well, just twenty-third?
Yeah, at nine thirty.
Any other discussion on that? Is there a motion to set the coverage for August twenty-third at nine thirty? So moved.
I can't.
Then moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carried.
And I will get that detailed set to you guys, so you can see that, too.
Okay, next we have is the approval of the publication of annual sales. This is for year twenty-one.
Anybody have any questions or anything in the face?
I had one last night. I forgot to solve. If there is none, where is your motion to approve the salaries? To recite. And moved in second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is the nerve management annual updates. And we have Cumberland, Section Two, Glitter Township, Town, Bottom County. Four-year update. Richmond Custom Farms, East Side, Section Twenty-One, Richmond Township, Annual Update, no changes. Richmond Custom Farms, Home Site, Section Twenty-One, Richmond Township, Annual Updates, no changes. Auburnman Finisher, Section Seven, Wheatland Township, Annual Update, no changes. Plucky, Section Thirty-Five, Eden Township, Annual Update, no changes. Brian Trader Homes, Section Twenty-One, Arcadia Township, Annual Update, updated soil samples, P-indexes, and Russell's Foods. Joe Danner, Section Twenty-Two, Glidden Township, Annual Update, updated soil samples, P-indexes, and Russell's Foods. And Shone Farms, Number One, Section Eleven, Grant Township, Annual Update, and updated soil samples and P-index and Russell's Foods. Okay, next we have is committee reports.
I'm going to go ahead and go first so I can jump into my next meeting here. But last week, we had the ambulance board. We went and discussed all the applications we received and narrowed it down to three. And we will have those interviews tomorrow night, starting, or tomorrow afternoon, starting at four. Today, I'm actually at the Capitol, meeting with other elected officials. And then we have, on Thursday, I have the ISAC legislation executive committee board meeting in Des Moines. And I think that's it for this week.
And you're going to cover for me tomorrow, right?
Correct. Oh, yes. And I have the, the DOT meeting with Adam Schwerz and the Highway Thirty Coalition meeting at the winery at eight-thirty tomorrow.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I can go next. Last week, I had the ambulance board meeting. Stephanie spoke to this week, tomorrow morning is my fill monthly meeting, and tomorrow afternoon are ambulance interviews. That's all I have.
I can go next. I really didn't have a lot yesterday. Just took, or last week, took a lot of phone calls. This week, we, I have the communication center meeting at noon today. DOT Commissioners Meeting tomorrow morning. Let's see, courthouse assessment thing is off, I guess. And that's it for this week.
I can go next. Last week, I really didn't have a lot except for just a lot of phone calls and things and emails. But I did have, and I had assigned documents out of new opportunities. This week, my schedule totally changed, but at noon, today I had communications meeting and Stephanie's covering me tomorrow for DOT because I have a funeral that I've got to be at that came up. And so I will not be at that or to see a C meeting. And then other meetings getting canceled. And I was supposed to have a new opportunity, more meeting that got canceled from next week also. So it's been a lot of changes. That's, that's my.
Last week, all I had last week was on the fourth. It was on the fourth. Didn't have anything else last week. Just coming up this week, tomorrow, I have C A C. The highway information at eight o'clock in the morning at Wipro. I'll be attending both of those. The twelfth, I will be in Des Moines. I represent from ISAC, and we'll be discussing the mental health takeover. Have more questions than answers, and probably will come away with the meeting with more questions and answers, so. Do you have any questions anybody has, they'd like to have? Right forth. It's from whose employees they're going to be, to the properties that we own, where does those fall, where does the maintenance fall in? There's, there's a vague group of questions. And hopefully, we get a lot of ground covered Thursday. But I, not just being, we don't need it all.
I did forget to mention, last week I did do, I went to lunch with Sheriff Pingery and then did a tour of the jail as well.
I think one thing, a question, I think, like with the budgets, I know that the HHS has got through all the region budgets now. Who's going to make the final determination on that? By one first. Jim, they're taking away some local.
Well, yeah, it, it appears to me that a lot of local control is going to go away. Yeah. Some of us know that so well. You can't handle it that full ways here. I, I'm just afraid we're going to be trapped. I guess that the building structures, the maintenance. What we do, how many IFRS programs now? Hiring and firing, is that going to fall on our wing? Is that going to fall on your wing? You're going to administer it? Or you're just going to give us money and step away? Or how are bills just going to work? I just can't imagine that there's going to be the viable money handed out without a finger attached to that somewhere or somehow. But maybe, maybe it will all go in our favor.
Courtney, you have anything?
Um, yeah. So one of our meetings, we're interviewing firms to do spatial needs. I made some notes about ordering priorities. But I just wanted to tell you which points I came up with, and then if you have more. Because that's what they're going to talk to us about. I had a table that faced public. Two tables, chairs, space for up to twenty-five public. Technology for virtual meetings, space for the auditor to take minutes, and a small space for supply solutions. Obviously, as I said, by the captain up there, this may be a huge space. But that's what I came up with.
I think that one of these, space also. I think that one of these, uh, space also for, uh whoever's presenting, like SAC or
and I think it should be a, um universal space. So that it can be used for other things like voting. You can set voting machines up. So it should have a good public ask, access. That would be my contribution, I guess.
I would have to grade Dean on that as well as having a multi-use space.
Next week we have a bill day, and then, um, new opportunities gonna be here in the general assistance meeting. That's all I have.
Any comments, Ben?
It's not Ben, it's Dalton actually, but nope, we're good to go, guys.
If there is nothing else, we're in order for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The move in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hold on one second here, I'm gonna take the stream down.
That we just adjourned. What time did all this happen down there?
Hold on, Rich. I, I haven't taken the stream down yet. Um, alright, you're good to go now.